Good evening, this is Enid Lapelis. Today is July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty, and the time is eight oh two P M. This is a regular meeting of the Monroe Town Council. As is customary before the start of our meetings, would you all please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? Uh, Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Uh, please allow me to confirm the presence of those Town Council members and any other staff or anticipated participants are present and are able to hear me. When I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Dee Dee Martin?
Yes, I can hear you.
Jen Aguilar?
Jen Aguilar here.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, present.
Harry Rooney?
Jerry Rooney here.
Jonathan Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, present.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, present.
Uh, Sean O'Rourke is absent tonight. Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, present.
And Enid Lapelis, present. Uh, staff and other anticipated participants, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. First Electman Ken Kellogg?
Ken Kellogg here.
Town Attorney Frank Lito? I'll call them again. Uh, Chris Nowaki?
Chris Nowaki here.
Talking restoration.
Chris Nowaki here.
Laura?
Mrs. Oros here.
Community and Social Services Director Hannah Ali?
Hannah Ali here.
Chair of the Conservation Commission Karen Bernaska? Chair of the Conservation Committee Karen Bernaska? And Town Attorney Frank Lito? Well, Mr. Kellogg, if you happen to see him on the, on the, uh, computer screen, you could just tell me and we'll, we'll put him in.
If I see him, I'll let you know.
I beg your pardon?
Ken Kellogg speaking. If I see him join, uh, Madam Chair, I will let you know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I hereby declare a quorum and call this meeting to order. A copy of the agenda and any related materials have been posted to and can be found on the town of Monroe's website, www.monroct.org for public inspection. Public meeting is being conducted remotely in compliance with Section One of Governor Lamonge's Executive Order Number Seven B, dated March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, using go-to-meeting electronic conferings technology. Using this technology, the public shall participate in real time in this meeting via computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone, using the access information set forth on the meeting agenda. Please be advised that each meeting has unique participation information, so please be sure that you have accessed the correct meeting. Notice is hereby given that only two hundred and fifty participants may access this remote electronic public meeting at any one time. Access to this meeting using this technology is granted solely by the technology provider on first-access basis and is not controlled by the town of Monroe. While it is anticipated that we will not exceed this participant number for this meeting, should it appear that we are approaching said limits, that any member of the public is denied access to the meeting, the chairman retains the right to adjourn and continue the meeting at a later date, using technology appropriate to ensure all members of the public may participate. Please take notice of the following regarding this remote electronic public meeting. One, that this meeting is being conducted in real time. Two, that this meeting is open to the public. Three, that any member of the public may listen or view to this meeting anonymously. That this meeting, four, is being recorded, and while we ask that you mute your microphone unless we recognize you speak, that anything you say, do, or is displayed on your screen may become part of the recording. That the recording shall be posted to the town's website within seven days. That the recording shall be made available to the public within a reasonable time in Town Hall or upon written request. As set forth on the agenda, this meeting will feature and permit public participation. Any written comments in the public regarding any business which would otherwise be germane to the public participation and received between the dates the agenda was posted through one hour before the start of this meeting will be read into the reading, into the record during the public participation portion of this meeting. Ground rules to ensure the meeting runs smoothly, the comments are audible, and any accurate record is maintained are as follows. This meeting shall follow standard parliamentary procedure. However, I ask all participants to follow these special rules in addition. Please mute your microphone so as to reduce background noise at all times you are not speaking. Prior to speaking on each occasion, you must clearly state your name for the record. The use of chat features is prohibited and will not be considered during the meeting at any time. All members will have an opportunity to speak on agenda items. However, please hold your comments until you are recognized. Once discussion is complete or a vote has been compelled by parliamentary procedure, the chair will call for a roll call vote on the motion. Before we continue, I understand that Councilmember Kevin Reed wishes to make a motion regarding suspension of the rules of procedure. Mr. Reed?
Yes, I do, Madam Chair, thank you. I move that pursuant to Article Seven of our Rules of Procedure, the Town Council suspend Rule Thirteen, which requires all matters relating to the general government of the town and all agreements to which the town is a party, be referred to L and A. The reason for this motion is that due to coronavirus, our subcommittees, including L and A, have not meant to consider the matters which appear on this evening's agenda, which otherwise would have been referred to and voted on by L and A as a conditioned precedent to appearing before the whole body. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Uh, do I have a second for this motion?
Jason Mauer, second.
Okay, any discussion? Then let's do a roll call vote. Dee Dee Martin? And it, we're looking for a roll call vote on the motion to suspend the rule. Dee Dee Martin?
Dee Dee Martin, aye.
Jennifer Aguilar?
Jennifer Aguilar, aye.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, aye.
Harry Rooney?
Harry Rooney, aye.
Jonathan Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, aye.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, aye.
Uh, Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, aye.
And Enid Lapelis, aye. So this passes eight, uh, eight to zero. Two-thirds vote required. Consent calendar. Are there any objections to be passed into consent counter as presented?
Madam Chairman?
Yes?
Uh, Dee Dee Martin speaking. I'd like to move, um, item F from the consent calendar and add it to new business as item E.
Okay, hang on. New business. Okay. Okay, so then I'm, I'm trying to get through the sheets to find item C. Okay, so what are we looking for?
Removing item F.
Yep.
Item F and moving it to new business. I believe it would be item E.
Okay, um, I have to just have the agenda just sitting here. Just give me a second to find it. Okay, 'cause I want, you know, I want to do it. Okay, so, item F. Okay, that's the, um, okay, I know which one that is. And that's now going to item E. Okay, yep. Okay, I got it now. Okay, thank you, Mrs. Martin. That'll, that'll be done. Okay. All right, so I, I hereby, I hereby pass the consent counter as presented with the amendment. I hereby ask that communications items A through L be referenced in the minutes of the meeting. At this time, I will ask, uh, uh, Mr. Kellogg to assist me in facilitating the next item on the agenda.
Madam Chair, before we move on?
Mm-hmm.
Jason Mauer, uh, I was curious if we knew if the town attorney was planning on joining the call, as there are some questions that I know I have for him, uh, with regards to certain items on this agenda and...
Okay, I thought... If Mr. Kellogg sees them, he will let us know. Correct, Mr. Kellogg?
Uh, First Electman Kellogg, uh, yes. My understanding was he was, uh, endeavoring to attend this evening. I will text him and confirm that he will be able to join at some point.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. There are no regular reports from our subcommittees at this time. We will go to action item G and ask the First Electman for his update. Mr. Kellogg?
Thank you, Madam Chair, just give me one minute. Okay. Get that text off. Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, my report this evening, uh, first, as has been customary, I'll start with COVID nineteen updates. Uh, so the case reports, state status, uh, we've had in Monroe probably, you know, one to two cases per day on a sporadic basis. There have been some days without any new cases. Uh, it is somewhat similar to the, uh, small increases that we are seeing in the state and in Fairfield County. Uh, we are, uh, operational with our contact tracing here in Monroe. Uh, the statewide positivity rate, uh, remains very low at less than one percent. Zero point seven percent is what, uh, the state informed us today. Uh, that said, as I said, I believe everybody knows, the state has delayed the Phase Three of our reopening, of the state's reopen plan. Uh, that, uh, the governor said today would likely be, uh, we'd be updated in a few weeks. It was kind of a, a general comment, so I read that to be that we expect to be in Phase Three probably for the next, uh, two to three weeks at least. Uh, but again, uh, we're waiting on more information on if and when Phase Three will come about. There does, uh, remain significant concerns regarding the potential, uh, spread from numerous other states that are currently experiencing very high and growing case rates. Today, the state epidemiologist advised that the risk of increased cases in the state remains, uh, and in fact, that we should anticipate a resurgence of cases at some point in the state. Uh, and that when we do social distancing and phase coverings currently, the best tools available to blunt any resurgence. Uh, so we're at Phase Two, our social gatherings remain at a limit of twenty-five indoors and one hundred outdoors. As far as, uh, updates on town services and facilities, most of these I think the, the council's aware of, but Town Hall departments, uh, are available, uh, by appointment in Town Hall in addition to the remote services that we have offered, uh, throughout. Uh, Great Hollow Lake is open. The Wolf Park Pool is open with a maximum of seventy attendees per session with advanced registration required. Uh, the pool, I'm sorry, the playgrounds and basketball courts are open. Uh, and as you're aware from, uh, this evening's agenda, uh, we are planning for a limited, uh, summer concert series at Wolf Park in August. Uh, and that is based on the fact that organized outdoor events, uh, are, have a higher cap of up to five hundred people, provided that, uh, each individual household is, uh, minimum of fifteen feet away blanket to blanket. Uh, an update, uh, on our community and economic recovery efforts, uh, which I know was of interest, uh, at the last meeting. Uh, our coordinator has, uh, had over a hundred outreach contacts with local businesses. Uh, there's been specific assistance provided to, uh, several businesses as well. Uh, that ranges from responding to questions and concerns regarding the, uh, sector rules. Uh, in some cases, it is, uh, actually responding to, uh, concerns from citizens about businesses and the sector rules. So, uh, he has been meeting with businesses to ensure that they're compliant and so that they will remain open. Uh, we've been, uh, there's, there's other efforts that have been done to make sure that businesses could find a way to open, uh, within the, uh, sector rule, uh, requirements, um, which have been things that have, uh, not only has been clear-cut in some cases. So there's been a lot of efforts to make sure that those businesses can open, uh, and stay open. Uh, there's been some assistance provided to specific businesses on a more, uh, individualized basis. One example is a retailer that, uh, had decided that they would not reopen for COVID. However, um, we intervened with their, at the request to, uh, kind of expedite and assist them in, uh, the process of selling their, uh, business, uh, to a new owner. Um, so obviously not in the sale itself, but in all the permitting and process and forms required to complete that sale, uh, for them. Uh, so that is underway, uh, and that's an example of, um, we, we actually, that process was done in under two weeks, uh, which was really, uh, a great, a great story for that business because they were quite concerned about needing to get that, uh, taken care of as soon as possible. There have been a lot of questions, uh, that have been addressed relative to the payroll protection program and the SBA loans, um, and then also assisting businesses with, uh, expansion efforts. Uh, there's a, a local business looking to expand and helping out in that regard. There have been discussions underway on two new development opportunities, uh, both under Route Twenty-Five. Uh, there have been over seventy COVID-specific grant opportunities that are currently in the process of being researched. Uh, unfortunately, Monroe does not qualify for the majority of them, but they are being researched and we are going to kind of go through those and make sure we're not leaving anything on the table. Uh, also have to scheduling meetings with, uh, all the commercial property owners that have significant leaseholds, um, uh, to understand what some of their, uh, issues and concerns might be relative to their tenants. Uh, and I have, uh, formally notified, uh, the State of Connecticut's Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, uh, that Mr. Holesworth is the, the Monroe's designated, uh, long-term recovery coordinator. And I'm hearing an echo now, but we'll see if that goes away. Uh, that State has specifically been asking for, um, uh, proud that we're one of the, we're one of the towns or cities in our region that has, uh, made that, uh, information known to the state. There's about a dozen, uh, ribbon cuttings that are currently being scheduled in collaboration with the, uh, EDC, uh, and the Chamber of Commerce, and, uh, there's collaboration that's going on in regards to, uh, regulation improvement, uh, and, and the ongoing process improvement discussions. Some examples there are, we're, uh, taking the opportunity to look at outdoor dining and the process of getting permanent outdoor dining approved, uh, and perhaps making that, uh, a little bit, uh, more palatable to some businesses so that they can continue to be successful. So that's obviously, uh, an effort that will have to be done in concert with the Planning and Zoning Commission with their regulations. Uh, but that is something underway, and we're looking at, as I said, other process, uh, efforts as well. So that's the COVID update. Uh, I wanted to, uh, mention an update on the MOA with the Board of Education on the Joint Finance Administration. Uh, just to report back to the Board of Ed did also approve, uh, the same at the council's meeting, the First Amendment to the MOA that has now been fully executed, uh, during our meeting. Uh, I know there was some discussion in regards to Resolution Twenty dash sixty-one, uh, in regards to input from, uh, the Superintendent and Finance Director Bonavsky. Uh, the Acting Superintendent, uh, I, I did, uh, extend the invitation to him. He is on vacation this week. However, my understanding is he did speak, uh, in favor of the extension at the Board of Ed meeting. Uh, and Mr. Bonavsky, uh, had, uh, sent me a memo in regards to his, uh, input on extending the agreement, and that memo was added to your packet as well, so you have that information. And the last item I wanted to update on is on Wheeler Road and Route One Ten, uh, the intersection that seems to, uh, be of, uh, a bit of a mystery for us at times. Uh, as I previously reported, in January, I asked the police department to do an analysis for two thousand and nineteen. Sent a, uh, correspondence to the DOT Commissioner, uh, asking for a comprehensive evaluation and for additional, uh, solutions. In March, I had reported back to you that the Commissioner, uh, advised that he would authorize a road safety assessment to be performed, a formal, uh, examination by an independent team. Uh, the DOT engaged UConn to conduct that assessment, and while it was, uh, impacted, uh, by the pandemic initially, uh, those efforts have progressed. Uh, earlier this month, Captain White, uh, has had a conversation with UConn, and they are currently in the process of working with him to schedule a technical review meeting with the town, Metricog, and the DOT, uh, to discuss their findings. So that is my update for this evening. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, uh, thank you. There is no unfinished business.
Madam Chair, ma- Madam Chair, Madam Chair. May I ask, Jen Aguilar, may I ask a question?
Sure, of course.
Uh, Mr. Kellogg, thank you for the update. Actually, you touched on two of the thing, three thing, two of the two things I was going to ask you about. So thank you for the update on Wheeler and One Ten because unfortunately, we've had another accident there in the last couple of weeks. And the MOA, I actually listened to, I just wanted to make a comment about that. I actually listened to the Board of Ed meeting where they talked about it, and I did feel that at the Board of Ed meeting, they did touch on the fact of how hard it is, how hard this job has been for Mr. Bonavsky and how they are working through it, and they hope to get, um, the Superintendent did mention he is looking, they are looking to get more help for Mr. Bonavsky. So I just wanted to make that clear that it is, it is a, it is, I think our concerns were more touched at the Board of Ed meeting than they were at our meeting. Um, but thank you for the updates.
Ken Kellogg? Councilwoman, uh, Aguilar and, uh, Ms. Lapelis, I just responded that. I, again, I, I never said that, uh, there wasn't a lot of work and that there is a lot of work happening. I think throughout this pandemic, many of us have, uh, uh, been, uh, busier than ever, and I don't, uh, in any way want to have anyone on this council perceive or, or the Board of Ed perceive that I think this was quote-unquote easy or there wasn't, uh, a lot going on. I fully recognize there is and appreciate your comments. Um, again, the intent of the extension was to allow that formal evaluation to proceed as was originally contemplated. That could not occur, uh, and I think all of us, uh, myself, uh, I don't want, certainly don't want to speak for the council and Board of Ed, but I think everyone, uh, simply wants to, uh, do the proper due diligence so we can, uh, you know, make an informed decision. So I appreciate your comments.
I'm sorry, uh, Madam Chair, Jen Aguilar, may I respond?
Sure.
Just real quick, I didn't mean to infer that you didn't say it was hard. I just meant the, the tone of the Board of Ed meeting was a lot different than our meeting, and it's probably because Mr. Bonavsky was there, and that's all I meant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, going on to new business, I'll be doing the motions because, um, Mr....
Madam Chair? Madam Chair? Dee Dee Martin, did you skip our first public participation?
You know what? It wasn't on my script. You're right. I just didn't have it here.
I don't know if I have any public, but...
Okay, well, so let me just ask. Anybody wish to publicly participate at our meeting? Mr. Kellogg, if you could look around, please?
Sure, if anyone wishes to speak, uh, please remember to unmute your microphone and indicate a desire to speak, uh, at this time.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Martin. Going on to new business, item A, Resolution Twenty dash Seventy-four, to consider and act upon a resolution regarding CT dot encroachment permits. Uh, I will introduce the motion. I move that Resolution Twenty dash Seventy-four regarding the authorization of state encroachment permits be hereby adopted and that the full reading of the resolution be waived and fully incorporated into the minutes. Do I have a second for this motion?
Jonathan Formicella, second.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kellogg, start the discussion, please.
Yes, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I was just, uh, confirming. I, I know you asked to be notified when Attorney Lito is present.
Okay.
I believe he may be present as one of the callers. Uh, I could just confirm, Mr. Lito, are you present?
I am present.
Uh, I see him now.
Okay, so when, when Mr. Mauer, when we get to the part that Mr. Mauer has questions on, we now know that Mr. Lito's here. Okay, Mr. Mauer?
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Ken Kellogg. Uh, Ms. Lapelis, as you asked, the, uh, discussion on Resolution Twenty dash Seventy-four. Uh, as I indicated in, uh, my cover memo, uh, the state has a process to, uh, require, uh, in certain cases, a specific permit, uh, for activity the town must conduct on the, on state right-ofways and state property. So there are times where, uh, town work is being done on a town road that intersects with a state road, uh, and may, uh, actually involve their property. Uh, the current matter that came before me was replacement of a historic district, uh, sign, uh, on Route One Ten. And, uh, while the DOT has not, um, really formally asked for these things on minor, uh, issues, uh, they appear to be doing so now. Uh, so in that regard, uh, rather than, uh, putting routine matters before us on a regular basis, and, uh, again, I should step back. The, the permit itself is very administrative. There are a couple of paragraphs that concern me because they contain some indemnification language. Uh, in consulting with the town attorney, uh, he felt that out of abundance of caution, uh, that this council, uh, authorized, and as a result, uh, he has prepared a resolution that would authorize this and any further, uh, encroachment permits from the state, uh, for these, uh, matters. So with that, uh, and again, you have the, uh, town attorney's memo in this regard as well. Thank you.
Okay, any, any of the council members have a discussion or questions for Mr. Kellogg? Or Mr. Lito?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Mauer?
Uh, Jason Mauer, thank you very much. Um, I did speak with our, uh, town attorney about this prior to the meeting, but I would like to get some clarification on, uh, the intent and spirit of the agreement of this resolution, and that it's my understanding, uh, from, uh, the interpretation of our town attorney that this resolution, uh, would, uh, allow for, yes, allow for future permits of this regard to be signed without council approval, but if there were a material change to the obligations, such as those indemnity obligations that would normally come before council, that this resolution would not apply to that, and, uh, that any future permits where there were such material changes would have to come before council before the selectman could sign off on those. Uh, if, that could be clarified by our town attorney.
With your permission, Madam Chair?
Yes, of course, Mr. Lito.
Uh, so Mr. Mauer and I did have a, a conversation. I want, I want to actually thank him for reaching out to me, uh, to have that offline discussion. It was helpful. Um, uh, basically, I agree with, uh, what his premise was. The, this administration, uh, we all are very familiar, uh, myself as Chair and now as Town Attorney, Mr. Kellogg has always, uh, brought any matters that were, uh, even, uh, in the spirit of a contract, uh, especially those that included certain indemnity language or releasing language or waiver language, uh, before council, uh, in an abundance of caution. This particular matter, I don't think, right, even, uh, necessarily rose to the level of having council oversight, uh, but it did have significant indemnity, uh, language in there. Uh, and so in that regard, I did suggest that it come before council, uh, which is on the agenda. Um, but I do agree that if there was a significant or material change in the, uh, town's obligations from an indemnity or waiver standpoint or otherwise, uh, that I would, it would be my recommendation that we do bring the revised, uh, form to council for, uh, it to be reviewed and approved. But I want to stress that that would only be in the situation that, uh, uh, it was my opinion or, uh, Mr. Kellogg's opinion, that there was a significant departure from what the resolution authorizes.
Thank you very much, uh, Attorney Lito. Uh, that does satisfy, uh, my concern with regards to this item. Uh, I would like to, uh, simply bring up that, uh, one overarching concern of mine, while I do support this resolution based off of that explanation, um, is that, uh, we need to be cautious of allowing for, uh, blanket future, uh, signatures on contracts, uh, or agreements with the town, uh, without first coming before the council. Like I said, I don't think this is the item where that really matters. It's just a concern I have seen considering some of the resolutions that we have been passing, and I, I just want to make the council aware of that. That being said, based off of the explanation, uh, from our town attorney, I have, I would support this resolution.
Okay, and any other discussion or questions?
Yeah, Madam Chair, uh, First Electman Kellogg?
Madam Chair, can I, can I just address that comment?
Sure. Certainly, Mr. Lito.
Okay, um, I just, to Mr. Mauer's point, I, I... Okay, um, I just, to Mr. Mauer's point, I, I, I just, uh, that was kind of affirmative statement. I, I just want to reiterate, make it clear, uh, that this, uh, as, as long as I've been a town attorney and as long as I've been chair on this issue, um, any, any agreement that was, as I said, and I'll just repeat myself, that was even close to being in the spirit of a contract, has been brought before council. Uh, so any concerns that Mr. Mauer may have about quote unquote a blanket resolution or any concerns about blanket resolutions, uh, would be unfounded because it's never happened before and it's not my intention. While I serve as town attorney, never to have that happen. And I can speak for Mr. Kellogg, although he's probably wants to speak for himself, but that's never been his intention either. So any insinuation that that has happened in the past or is likely to happen or any insinuation that there's even a slippery slope here, uh, is just completely blatantly false. And, uh, I just wanted to state.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
First Selectman Kellogg, uh, I just wanted to, uh, add to what Attorney Lido mentioned earlier. I, I just want to say that I don't believe, uh, in my recollection, any first selectman has brought the number of contractual agreements to a council before than I have. I have taken anything that even has the remote terms and conditions or the, the possibility of terms and conditions being, uh, being interpreted as terms and conditions to this council. So certainly, uh, if anything were to change relative to, uh, what, what the original intent of this authority would be, uh, other than just allowing me to expeditiously process what is essentially administrative, uh, permit, um, anything that would materially change, I would certainly bring it to council in the exact same spirit that I'm bringing it to you, uh, in the first case. So, thank you.
Thank you very much to both the selectman and Attorney Lido for those assurances.
Okay, so I'm gonna call for a roll call vote on the resolution. Dee Martin?
Dee Martin, aye.
Jen Aguilar?
Jen Aguilar, aye.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, aye.
Terry Rooney?
Terry Rooney, aye.
John Formicella?
Sorry, Terry Rooney, aye.
John Formicella, aye.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, aye.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, aye.
And Ian Lepelis, aye. So the vote, the motion passes by a vote of eight to zero. Going on to item B, Resolution 20-75, to consider an act upon a resolution regarding the 2020 Summer Concert Performance Agreement. Resolution 20-75, resol, resolved, that Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the following performance agreements with the Town of Monroe Concert Series Contract Addendum and any associated documents by and between the parties for the 2020 Summer Concert Series at Wolf Park. One is Boondocks, two is Royalty Steel Pan Band, three is John Cozalino River of Dreams, four is the usual Lebowski. Do I have a second for this motion?
Jason Mauer, second.
Okay, uh, Mr. Kellogg, can I start the discussion, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, uh, I want to again, uh, thank, uh, our Parks and Recreation Director, uh, Missy Oroz for, uh, keeping us, uh, with a, with some bands available, uh, this summer. It's something that she's been, uh, doing a great job on. Uh, as I mentioned earlier in my update, um, at this point, we anticipate that it would be allowable to conduct a limited, uh, summer concert at the park. Uh, so to that end, uh, she has, um, gone ahead and basically rescheduled a lot of the, uh, bands, uh, that are still available based upon, uh, the August dates that we have. So there are four, uh, contracts, uh, that were provided to the town. Uh, Mr. Lido, uh, revised, I believe, the standard addendum that Prior Attorney Hayden, uh, had originally, uh, crafted for these agreements. Uh, so all of those are in your packet, uh, before you. And, um, as well as, uh, Attorney Lido's opinion letter. And, uh, we'd certainly like to get these authorized so that we can, uh, finalize our arrangements, uh, for a slightly smaller, but, uh, and probably different concert series, uh, than normal. But nonetheless, some concerts at Wolf Park this summer.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Oh, go ahead.
Ms. Aguilar first and then Mr. Mauer, if that's who it is.
Missy, um, I just wanted to point out the contract of the usual Lebowski's, uh, still says July. Says July 10th, 2020.
On the front page or the back page? Uh, oh, on the back page, yes. Yep, I see that. Okay.
Missy, what date?
They're supposed to, they moved from July.
We only have one page.
Oh, okay, because I have two at my copies here at home. Um, they were originally supposed to come July 10th, but they're now coming August 28th.
Okay, so that's, that's my change.
I don't think I'll be going.
Who's birthday?
It's mine, Ian, it's August 28th.
Oh, well, we'll have to, we'll have to have them sing to you. You better come to the concert.
Right, right. Okay, so any more discussion on, uh, the concerts?
Madam Chair? Uh, Jason Mauer, uh, just wondering, have we, uh, and this actually only applies to two of the agreements. As I believe in my reading of the other two agreements, it would be a moot point that we would be able to cancel with no fee. But with regards to the, the Bowsky contract and the Boondocks contract, did we approach them about, uh, adding a clause for cancellation due to changing COVID restrictions that would not require any payment?
Um, to be honest with you, um, they both said that if some, they verbally told me over the phone when I was doing the rescheduling, that if something changed and we weren't able to do it, it wasn't going to be an issue, but I guess we probably should get that in writing.
Uh, First Selectman Kellogg, First Selectman Kellogg speaking. I believe if you direct your attention to the standard addendum, item seven, provides the town with that assurance for all of these agreements.
This is, uh, town attorney Frank Lido, that's correct.
It includes the proposed restrictions.
Anything else for discussion before we do a roll call vote?
Uh, nope, no other comments on that. Thank you both to the First Selectman and the town attorney for pointing that out. Uh, I would make a motion to amend the resolution to be conditional upon the correction of the date in the, the Bowsky contract.
Okay, so we have to, uh, second that motion?
Jen Aguilar, second.
Okay, and I think we've had discussion, so now we can, uh, do the roll call vote on the amended resolution. So Dee Martin?
Dee Martin, aye.
Jen Aguilar?
Jen Aguilar, aye.
Madam Chair, this is, uh, Frank, Frank Lido, just to interrupt you. You have to vote on the amendment before you can vote on the amended motion.
Okay, so can I have a, uh, I'll go through the names for a vote on the amendment. Okay, Mr. Lido?
That's correct.
Okay, so Dee Martin, voting on the amendment?
Dee Martin, aye on the amendment.
Jennifer Aguilar?
Jennifer Aguilar, aye.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, aye.
Terry Rooney?
Terry Rooney, aye.
Jonathan Formicella?
John Formicella, aye.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, aye.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, aye.
And Ian Lepelis, aye. So the motion for ma, for the amended, um, resolution is now an eight to zero vote. So now we're gonna vote on the amended resolution, correct, Mr. Lido?
That's correct.
Okay, so Dee Martin?
Dee Martin, aye.
Jen Aguilar?
Jen Aguilar, aye.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, aye.
Uh, Terry Rooney?
Terry Rooney, aye.
John Formicella?
John Formicella, aye.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, aye.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, aye.
And Ian Lepelis, uh, so the amended resolution passes with a vote of eight to zero. Going on to item C, Resolution 20-76, to consider an act upon a resolution regarding the 2020 Neighbor Assistance Act Program Application. Resolution 20-59, resolved, that the following 2020 Neighbor Assistance Act Program applications are hereby approved. We have Monroe Food Pantry and Monroe Conservation and Water Resources Commission Pollinator Gardens. Can I do them both together at the same time, Mr. Lido? That's okay? So I'm gonna ask for a, a second to this motion.
Jason Mauer, second.
Okay, um, Mr. Kellogg, discussion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, uh, as this council's well aware, this is a program that we've been doing, uh, at least for every year that I've been in office, uh, where there are only, there are two applications, uh, before you. This program provides, uh, a benefit to, uh, community, nonprofit or municipal programs uh, that meet certain qualifications that these programs both, uh, both meet uh, by, uh, encouraging, uh, donations from certain business entities that would be eligible for a state, uh, tax credit by virtue of their donations to approved programs. The program is administered by the State Department of Revenue Services. Uh, as a condition precedent to this council, uh, approving the applications, a public hearing must be held. Uh, as you know, the council held the public hearing immediately prior to this meeting at 7:30. Uh, that having been completed, uh, the only, uh, further item that is required is this council's, uh, approval of the applications upon which, uh, my office would be authorized to submit a final application to the state asking that both programs, uh, be approved by the state, uh, which I would ask that you proceed in doing. Thank you.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair? Jason Mauer, uh, I would just like to take this opportunity to, one, uh, commend the Food Pantry on the incredible work they've been doing throughout, uh, as, as they always do, but especially throughout this pandemic, as well as the community who's really come together. I've seen in multiple occasions to help support the Food Pantry. Um, and two, I would just like to wish both of these, uh, entities and projects luck in their fundraising through this program. Uh, they are perfect examples of what this program should be used for.
Okay, thank you. Any more discussion from any member of the council? Go ahead. Any more discussion? So I don't hear or see anybody. So I'm gonna call for a roll call vote on the resolution. Dee Martin? Time over. Dee Martin, roll call vote on the resolution?
Dee Martin, aye.
Jen Aguilar?
Jen Aguilar, aye.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, aye.
Terry Rooney?
Terry Rooney, aye.
Jonathan Formicella?
John Formicella, aye.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, aye.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, aye.
And Ian Lepelis, yes. So it passes, motion passes by a vote of eight to zero. Item D, acceptance of donations that individually exceed $1,500. I move that the following donations be hereby accepted. $3,100 from Monroe Lions Charities for Food Pantry and $2,000 from Victorinox Swiss Army for Sprint for Monroe. Do I have a second for this motion?
Jason Mauer, second.
Thank you. Um, discussion? Mr. Kellogg, anything to say?
Uh, nothing that, nothing other than our, uh, ongoing thanks to both of these, uh, entities. I think you're aware, the Monroe Lions, uh, has been extremely generous for multiple projects in town, uh, as well as Victoria Knox Swiss Army. And so I, certainly my thanks on behalf of the community goes out to, uh, uh, both of these organizations for the ongoing, uh, contributions that they're making to, uh, these really worthwhile programs. So thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion from the town council members?
Madam Chair, Jen Aguilar, may I say something?
Sure, of course.
Thank you. I also just wanted to point out, uh, thank you, since we're on altogether, to First Selectman's office for donating the pride flag for Pride Day. Thank you very much. That was very generous and it was a great, great day.
Okay, any other discussion?
Thank you, uh, um, Madam Chair, First Selectman Kellogg speaking. I just wanted to clarify, uh, that item was on the donation list, but just to be clear, that was a donation from, uh, Nick Kapoor to the town, uh, through my office. So that donation was from Mr. Kapoor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any more discussion?
Jen Aguilar, thank you, Mr. Kapoor.
Okay, any more discussion? So we're gonna do a roll call vote. Dee Martin?
Dee Martin, aye.
Jen Aguilar?
Jen Aguilar, aye.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, aye with great gratitude.
Terry Rooney?
Terry Rooney, aye.
Jonathan Formicella?
John Formicella, aye.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, aye.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, aye.
And Ian Lepelis, aye. So this motion passes by a vote of eight to zero. Uh, on to E, E is the one that was from F on the consent counter. Now it's a, uh, new business. Resolution 20-73, resolved that Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the conflict waiver agreement providing the town's consent to Conan Wolfe's legal representation of A, Arnold M. Karp and affiliated entitled entities, and B, John M. Kimball and affiliated entities. Do I have a second for this motion?
John Formicella, second.
Okay, so Jonathan Formicella, uh, Mr. K-
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, so as you have in my cover letter, uh, the town is currently utilizing, uh, counsel, uh, from the firm of Marino, Zabel and Schellenberg. Uh, as you know, from a prior council meeting, uh, Mr. Marino, uh, and, uh, some of his colleagues have, uh, left Conan Wolfe and have subsequently formed their own, uh, firm. Uh, these two, uh, the, the two principals and their affiliated, uh, entities, uh, apparently have, uh, asked to have Conan Wolfe represent them in certain matters. Uh, so Conan Wolfe has sent the waiver, uh, letters, uh, to my attention. Uh, I have consulted with both town attorney Lido and special counsel Marino, uh, to get their input. Uh, they both indicated that they do not see any conflicts, uh, or objections, I should say, any objections to waiving, uh, the conflict. I believe Attorney Lido further, uh, explained that, um, this was more of a, uh, technical matter relative to the rules of procedure, uh, of, uh, rules of practice. Uh, I would actually ask that Attorney Lido would probably provide more, uh, information on this better than I, as it is a very legal, uh, matter. Uh, but with your permission, Madam Chair?
Yes, of course. Mr. Lido?
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Yeah, I, I think you said it very well. I mean, this is a purely technical issue. As you know, Attorney Marino and some of his colleagues formerly worked at Conan Wolfe. Conan Wolfe was retained firm, um, through, uh, Mr. Marino on behalf of the town. As a result of that prior retention, the Town of Monroe, uh, was a client of, uh, Conan Wolfe. So technically, our rules of, canons of ethics, our rules of professional conduct would require a, an acknowledgement as, or consent, uh, to the apparent conflict. Uh, but in this case, there is no actual conflict whatsoever, uh, as the attorneys who represented the town are no longer at Conan Wolfe. So, uh, this is a mere, uh, procedural formality, uh, and, uh, required by Conan Wolfe.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on this motion?
Madam Chair?
Mm-hmm, yep.
DeeDee, DeeDee Martin, may I speak to this, please?
Of course.
Um, I, I personally have a concern about granting a waiver to the firm Conan Wolfe. To believe that a firm that once represented the Town of Monroe in litigation is now going to represent the same parties or party that we are currently in active litigation with doesn't seem to me to be appropriate. It'll be, for sure be pointed out that different, different attorneys will be handling this litigation. And I understand our attorney, Mr. Marino, has assured us that he has no concern, but that assurance that, that the firm itself is not privy to information and/or strategy in the form of memos or notes or emails or casual discussions is a serious concern to me. In the waiver request, Conan Wolfe states that they, uh, let me see, they will not represent the entities and matters that are materially adverse to the town in the same or substantially related matters in which the firm previously represented the town. To me, there is the potential for a conflict there and I am not comfortable with this waiver. Why would the Town of Monroe give a waiver to somebody that's going to now literally change sides? I jokingly likened it to, uh, Ms. Aguilar, to, uh, a soccer team and somebody taking off their jersey and now they're going to put on another jersey and play for the other team. Um, you can't unring the bell. They were in that large firm at one point when the litigation was going on and I think this is inappropriate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
First Selectman? I would just like to, uh, clarify that there is no active litigation involving either of these parties. There are some administrative, uh, and regulatory actions that are in process, uh, with the Welland Commission, Planning and Zoning Commission, but there is not any litigation.
This is, uh, Town Attorney Frank Lito. I just want to reiterate what Attorney, um, First Selectman Kellogg said, and also want to point out that I had, I personally had discussions, as did the First Selectman, with Attorney Marino and his staff, uh, to, uh, who are representing the town, who the town has a retention agreement with, to, uh, be sure, who, no one knows better the, uh, effect, if any, that this, uh, waiver could or would have, uh, as a result of the prior representation by Conan Wolfe than Attorney Marino and, uh, and Attorney Schellenberg, who both were partners at Conan Wolfe. Neither one of them had an iota of concern about, uh, any of the things that Ms. Martin read in what appeared to be a prepared statement. Um, so I have to defer heavily to Attorney Marino, uh, as to any, uh, feeling of impropriety or other advantage that could be gleaned in any way, shape, or form from representation, uh, by Conan Wolfe. And he had absolutely zero concerns and, uh, that's with specific knowledge. My general knowledge of the situation, I also have no concern. So this is not, uh, an issue whatsoever that I'm concerned about on behalf of the town.
Madam Chair, DeeDee Martin?
Yes, yep.
Thank you for that, Mr. Lito. I did not realize that making notes on my thoughts was inappropriate at a council meeting, um, but I will keep that in mind for the future.
Any other discussion?
Madam Chair? Oh, go ahead.
You go, Jay.
Madam Chair? Uh, Jason Mauer, uh, just a quick question to, uh, First Selectman as well, or to the Town Attorney. The administrative matters that, uh, are pending, I agree, there, there certainly is no litigation pending, but the administrative matters that are pending, were, uh, Attorney Marino, uh, or was Conan Wolfe handling those me- matters for the town, those administrative matters that are still currently pending when those, when the attorneys were at Conan Wolfe?
First Selectman Kellogg, uh, yes. Uh, the, both Attorney Marino, uh, and with his, uh, partners, uh, have been actively, uh, functioning as special counsel, uh, for the town and assisting, uh, you know, obviously both, uh, you know, my office as well as our Elan Wetlands Commission and our Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, related to properties that are, uh, owned by at least one of the entities, uh, here. Um, you know, that said, I, I also wanted to point out, uh, that Attorney Marino, who, again, I have to rely upon his evaluation of this, uh, without hesitation, uh, was not concerned. I believe in his letter, uh, that you have, he also indicated that, uh, none of the attorneys, uh, that remain there were involved in these cases, you know, in these matters. Uh, and in fact, his, his letter kind of, uh, almost at the, I think it was the second to last paragraph, um, opined that, uh, having a relationship with the Conan Wolfe attorneys would be advantageous to the town in addressing these properties, which I read to be, uh, potentially, you know, avoiding additional costs by, uh, dragging this, you know, dragging issues out. So, um, again, uh, so the answer to your question is yes, but I believe Attorney Marino kind of addressed that in his letter.
Thank you.
Any other question?
If I may continue?
Yep, go ahead.
Thank you, First Selectman Kellogg. Um, I agree with the, uh, reading of Attorney Marino's letter and that, uh, in his indications. Uh, and I also would state that, uh, waivers like this are fairly commonplace. That being said, out of an abundance of caution, uh, because of the fact that these matters were being handled by Conan, these direct matters were being handled by Conan Wolfe before the departure, uh, I, I think it would be prudent, uh, without, uh, prudent to not waive the privilege as well as, uh, I don't see a dis- uh, I don't see a disadvantage in doing so to the town. While it may not create an advantage, and there's no way to really know that, uh, I do not see a disadvantage in, uh, choosing not to waive the privilege.
Do I hear any other discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes. Jen?
Jennifer Aguilar, Jennifer Aguilar. Mr. Mr. Kellogg, I actually just wanted to point out on Mr. Marino's letter, um, I don't know how big a deal this is, but it says, um, CW attorneys will advantageous, and I think there's, uh, a letter, a word missing in there, will be advantageous to the town with addressing the issues concerned. I don't know if that's a, a thing, but it's missing a word. That's all.
Any other discussion?
We'll certainly point out to Mr. Marino the typo of his missing word. Thank you.
You put it in there when you were discussing.
Okay.
Okay, any more, any other discussion on this resolution? I'm going to call for a roll call vote. Mrs. Martin?
DeeDee Martin, no.
Jennifer Aguilar?
Jennifer Aguilar, no.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, no.
Terry Rooney? Terry Rooney? Terry there?
Uh, sorry, Madam Chair. Uh, sorry, I, at my phone, I had a, a hiccup with the phone and I lost, uh, part of that resolution. I, I apologize. I, I can't ask to vote at this moment.
So, so you're not going to vote right this minute?
Well, I apologize. I, uh, hold on. Wait a minute, let me catch up here. Uh, uh, yes, Madam Chair, uh, my vote is yes. I apologize.
Okay, Jonathan Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, yes.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, aye.
Kevin Reed? Kevin?
Kevin Reed, aye.
Enid Lapelis, aye. So the vote is five to three. Um, I correct that majority rule, so this vote passes. Does the motion pass because of the five to three vote?
It does.
It does. Okay, motion passes by a vote of five to three. So, lastly, we have second public participation. At this time, I will ask for Mr. Kellogg to assist me in facilitating the next item on the agenda, public participation. Does anybody wish to participate for this second public participation?
Yes, my name is Karen Bernask. I live at ninety-nine Bagburn Road and I chair Conservation Commission and I would like to thank the council for supporting the, our Neighborhood Assistance Act application for the Pollinator Garden at St. Harold. Thank you.
Okay, any other public participation? So there being no further business, I hereby declare this meeting adjourned at nine oh two P M. Thank you. The next meeting, I believe, is August twentieth, unless there's anything special, um, coming up that Mr. Kellogg will talk about.
Have a wonderful month, everybody.
August twenty-fourth.
Thank you, same to you.